Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's business meeting of the Lower Makefield Board of Supervisors. I call the meeting to order, and our first item of business will be to rise and state the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, good republic, the wisdom things, one nation, and the God. We give the call, justice for all.
We'll take a roll call. Supervisor Lewis?
Here.
Supervisor Blondie?
Here. Here?
Here. Supervisor Grunier?
Here.
Supervisor McCartney is absent. Is on his way to Florida. Item four, community announcements. Is there anyone in the audience that has an announcement for the township? Anybody online who has an announcement for the township? Not being heard. I will read what I have. Lower Makefield Township will be holding a styrofoam and recycling event on Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to noon outside the township building here on 1100 Edgewood Road. We're collecting clean, white styrofoam, natural and synthetic corks, clean pill bottles with tops, and household batteries. The Historical Commission is planning a community cleanup day at Slate Hill Cemetery on May the 6th at 9:00 a.m. Slate Hill is located at 2308 Yardley Morrisville Road. Cleanup will be focused on branches and leaves, and as part of the plan to clean grave markers. And Lower Makefield Yardley VF Post 6393 and American Legion Knowles Doyle Post 317 will be leading their annual Memorial Day Observation Ceremony and Parade on Monday, May 29th. Morning observance begins at 9:00 a.m. at Delaware Avenue Monument, and the Main Street Parade begins at 11:00 a.m. As usual, the plate will muster on Maple Vale Drive and proceed down Main Street to its conclusion at the American Legion Post. I'm going to change the agenda a little bit. We'll go to zoning hearing. Item four, since I think most of the people in this room are concerned about item four. And this is a reconsideration of our last our last decision not to defer exclusively to the zoning hearing board. A lot of things have transpired since that decision, including a zoning hearing board meeting, and there's a lot of things in motion right now. So we're removing that from the table. However, we do need to make a related motion, and I'm going to recognize Supervisor Blondie at this point to make those motions.
So I don't know if I can do it as combined, so I'll try that, and then, Mr. Trulove, if you tell me.
I suggest you do separate motions, Adam Supervisor.
Then I would make a motion to solicit proposals for conflict council to participate, to represent the board, possibly represent the board in front of zoning hearing.
Second that motion?
There's a motion and a second to obtain conflict council to participate if the board so desires. Any discussion by the board?
Just for clarification, we're looking for, so everyone understands what I think we're doing here. Am I close enough? Okay. We're putting out essentially an RFP to conflict council to provide information to the board so that the board can make a collective decision on participation or not.
And that's as an RFP, Dan, but we would be, I don't think it's as formal as an RFP.
Whether it's a form, so, RFP, request for proposal is a specific type of, for those that are not familiar, it's a specific type of document that goes out and is out there. What we are requesting proposals
Correct.
from, from law firms or a law firm conflict council to, so that, so we can be informed as to potential for participation in the zoning hearing board matter.
Would you permit me to explain why? I guess it probably.
Absolutely, please.
As many of you may recall, the vote was taken last meeting. Law offices, including me, weren't aware of the proximity of the neighborhood to the synagogue. It turns out that one of the affected neighbors who's a party in the case now is a law partner of mine who's present in the room tonight. And he certainly has every right to take that position, as does everybody else. And of course, the synagogue has every right to take its position, as does Verizon. But it would be, it would be, in my opinion, an appearance of impropriety for our firm to represent the township coextensively with, when, when one of the private parties is one of my law partners. That's, that's why that, that determination has been made.
Any other discussion or comments by the board? Is there any public comment by the board, by the public? Not hearing any, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of proposals for conflict council signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Those no? Eyes have it, three, one. There's a second?
Yes, I was just trying to see the date of the next zoning hearing meeting.
May 2nd is the one that's currently listed for.
Thank you so much. Then I would like to make a motion to seek a continuance of the zoning hearing board meeting currently scheduled for May 2nd.
Second that motion?
Any discussion by the board?
I could ask our solicitor a question.
Sure.
Really process oriented. If for some reason the zoning hearing board decides not to continue the meeting, or whoever, whatever parties just don't want to do that, what is, what can we do?
Well, we could, I mean, you could always, if you got council, you could always approve council, then have it ratified later if somebody came in and have them attend. At least at that time, you know, this, this one little I know about the case, there's going to be quite a bit of other. This is not going to be one or two hearings, let's put it that way. So there'd be plenty of opportunity to, to make a record. And as some people may not be aware, even if the party, even if the township doesn't participate, in any case, I'm not just talking about this one. They always retain the right to be a party later on. So that's, that, we have that right always, but it's usually customary if, if we're going to participate in some capacity that we have council there. So that, that's why that would be.
And the, the main reason for my question for everyone here, it's just the dates of the meetings. I think our meeting is the day after, so if we have to vote on anything.
Right. And, and there will be new zoning hearing board council. Obviously, that was somebody that was appointed last night, the, as the conflict council to the zoning hearing board, so that person, I can't speak for Mr. Fredman, may, may need time to get up to speed too. So I've done, but there's a lot, as, as the chairman said, there's a lot of moving parts here.
There's no other comments or famous by the board questions? Any public comment? Not hearing any public comment, go to the vote. All those in favor of asking for a continuance by the zoning hearing board, please raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Eyes have it, three, one. Okay.
You, Mr. Chair, Mr. Craft, did you want to have him discuss what, what may be happening?
Yeah, just for the, for the benefit of the public, for also the benefit of the board, township staff will be meeting with Verizon on one day next week to try to discuss the, the potential of alternative location on that site, and then also alternative locations in general. And also to, to try to better understand some of the deficiencies of service that, that, that may exist in that area of the township. And so in addition to the consultation with the potentially to be appointed conflict council, we'll have that information for you as well as you're contemplating your decision as to whether to participate or not.
Okay. You're all entitled to, invited to stay for the whole meeting if you want. But that'll be, that's all we're going to talk about for this zoning, this zoning issue for today. Right. Item five, consider approval of minutes for March 15th. I hear a motion to approve the minutes.
I can motion to approve the minutes from March 15th, 2023. Second.
There's a mission, motion to approve by Supervisor Grunier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, four, zero. Item six, financials. Mr. McCartney is absent, so we'll go to our vice chair. Supervisor Blondie?
Yeah. Sorry, everybody. Um, the first item is number A, and it's just a, the treasurer reports for February and March of 2023. So on a month for the February 2023, that's this year, the township took in revenue in the amount of $925,994 and 94 cents, and had a total amount of expenses of $1,660,703.90. Equally, for March, March is a much better month. The township had revenues of $4,342,087.71, with expenses of $2,099,193.44. And with that, I make a motion to approve the February interfund transfers in the amount of $753,696, sorry, $753,696.29.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any public comment? Any comment by the board? Any public comment?
Procedure for tonight with respect to the reconsideration of the township's participation. I didn't, I heard a procedural motion about continuances, but I didn't hear a procedural motion about the vote for your reconsideration.
That's going to be deferred to the next meeting after conflict council is retained to.
Okay, so when the, when conflict council is retained, we'll have another meeting to discuss that.
Correct.
So all of us here on that issue for tonight may enjoy the rest of the evening. All right. Thank you.
Good tomorrow, Jack.
And just, just for the benefit, the next Board of Supervisors meeting is on the 3rd of, of May, so just at, at 7:30, just for folks' information.
Correct.
That's goodbye motion.
Yes, we're still back on the.
The, we had the second. We have. No public comment. We'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Eyes have it, four, zero.
And I make a motion to approve the interfund transfers for the, for the month of March in a million, in the amount of $1,132,039.88.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Aye. Eyes have it, four, zero.
I have a discrepancy. Sorry, Dave Township Manager, that I didn't pick up on this before. The agenda says March 20th, but the warrant list that I have says March 17th. Are you able to tell me which it should be?
Yes, I believe it should be the 17th. I apologize for that on the agenda.
That was St. Patrick's Day. That was, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. So thank you for that, Dave. Then I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna do the.
I'm sorry, I, I think it, yeah, the 20th, I believe, is, is the, yeah, it's a, it's a Monday, yes. It should be the 20th so that the, the agenda is, is correct. There's a typo on the, on the warrant list.
Okay. That's even better. So then I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do this all at once. Make a motion to consider approval of the warrant lists from March 20th, April 3rd, and April 17th, respectively in the amount of $409,042.68, $650,289.40, $239.3, sorry, $239.332.46, totaling the amount of $1,258,269.54.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Grunier on the warrant list from March 20th, April 3rd, and April 17th. Any comments? Any public comment? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Eyes have it, four, zero. Where that? Item seven, the engineer's report. Mr. Pockle?
Yes, hello supervisors. You have in your packet my engineer's report. I'm, I'm going to dive right into the agenda items that I have. Item A is to consider the award of the 2023 road program to Earl Asphalt Company in the amount of $1,137,813.13 for the base bid. And add alternate number four in the amount of $26,400. Supervisors, we opened bids on March. Sorry, there it is. March 30th, 2023, we received a total of five bids. They ranged in, in, in various pricing from the low bid up to $1,700,000 and change. The base bid is to mill and overlay a number of roads in the township, West Wellington, East Wellington, Fountain Road, Wingate, North Bradford, Heather Circle, Roloffs Road, Ramsey Road, East of Kings, and Central Drive is the base bid. Also, if you'll see, we opened a number of add alternate bids. We are allowed to award any of the add alternates. However, we're recommending due to budget constraints, the award of the base bid and alternate bid number four, which is the portion of Maple Vale Drive that is from Meadow Drive to Taylorsville Road. If you'll remember, we have a drainage project that has recently been completed there that was supposed to be paved in last year's 2022 road program. We've gotten a price to, to pave that under this year's road program. We also received prices from the contractor who was doing the drainage work, prices from contractors that were doing work within the area. And the price that we received through the road program was cheaper than the other prices that we received. And therefore, we're recommending award of both the base bid and add alternate number four.
Just, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, members of the board, just some additional information as, as it relates to the issue that Andy has, has just articulated. We are going to communicate to the contractor, to the extent that you award this bid, that, that Maple Vale be sort of the, the initial bit of work, recognizing that, that work was anticipated to be completed in 2022. So from a work sequence perspective, we'll provide that direction to, to the contractor if you so award the bid this evening. And then just to provide some financial information as it relates to the program, the 2023 budget contemplated that the cost for paving, for this year's paving program was going to be $785,000. As you can see, we have a gap in funding between what was contemplated and what ultimately was realized when we went to public bid. So we are recommending continuing to proceed with, with this work because of the necessity of this work, and are proposing that the gap be funded utilizing proceeds from the 2016 bond proceeds account or the American Rescue Plan Act. But again, our, our initial thought is that those restricted bond proceeds would be more appropriate, recognizing that the, the other funds that the township has available are not, not as restricted and could be used for other uses. So again, just wanted you to be aware that while you're awarding this bid, it is an exceedance of what was contemplated from a budget standpoint.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to award the 2023 road program to Earl Asphalt in the amount of $1,137,813.13. road program to Earl Asphalt in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and thirteen cents for the base bid and add alternate number four in the amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Bundy to award the two thousand and twenty-three road program to Earl Asphalt for the stated amounts. Any comment by the board?
There are a couple of questions, actually. One, um, Mr. Kratzer, um, when, when we're looking at the, the delta between the budget and what the actual here, uh, you had mentioned options to pay for it. If we use American Rescue Plan money versus the bond money that's been discussed in a couple of different scenarios, I guess, recently. One, how much, in, under that scenario, how much money do we have left in the rescue plan funds? Uh, cause we've, I know those have been distributed amongst different projects or discussed to be distributed amongst different projects come moving forward. And then obviously the bond fund's a little different in terms of what we can and can't use that for, so.
Yeah, I, I, our recommendation would be to use, um, or my recommendation would be to use the bond proceeds. I, I know I referenced American Rescue Plan Act dollars, um, but a- again, as I said, the, the bond proceeds are, are restricted for capital projects. Um, roadway improvement was one of the contemplated, you know, projects as, as part of that. Uh, again, in that account, there, there's, um, and I was going to report on this later, there's, there's about four point two million dollars of remaining proceeds from the, uh, two thousand and sixteen issue. So, um, the gap that exists, um, in, um, you know, between budget and, and, uh, here, uh, what the, um, uh, base bid and the alternate is, is, um, about three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, so a little over three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So, there are sufficient funds in that, in that account, uh, which are of a restricted fashion to, to utilize. Uh, the other funds that are in that account, uh, cause again, there was some public conversation about, uh, there being nine million dollars in, in that fund. Um, the other, uh, funds, um, are not bond proceeds despite the checking account being labeled as two thousand and sixteen bond proceeds. Uh, there were non, uh, debt proceeds that were placed into the account. Um, now they were, uh, set, you know, they were accounted for from an accounting perspective. Um, and so, um, the component parts of that, that roughly nine point three million dollars that was reported in terms of bond proceeds, four point two of that or four point three of that is, is, is roughly the, the actual bond proceeds. Um, two million or so is attributable to, um, uh, an agreement that the township entered into relative to a cell phone tower lease. So you monetized that cell phone tower lease and sold that interest to a company, they provided a two million, million dollar deposit for that. Um, and then, uh, the remaining is, um, three million dollars, uh, which was the initial deposit from the sanitary sewer sale. All of those were deposited into this checking account, again, with a very specific title, um, but, but accounted for from, from an accounting, uh, perspective. So, um, that's, again, just a, I know that's not on your specific question, but just give a little bit more context to that issue.
I guess the short question on that is, I don't, I not really, I didn't realize we're gonna ask this question going into this, but is, that sounds like something township needs to rectify from a, from a bank account perspective. That, did my reading that correct?
The co-mingling of the, of the funds.
These funds.
So, we will be coming back to you, uh, at your meeting on, on May the third to, um, to try to clean that up. Uh, again, there's nothing wrong that, with, with what was done. Um, a- again, it, uh, but, but would recommend, uh, addressing that, um, for example, taking the three million dollars that's currently in that account and putting it in the fund where the other sale proceeds are, are, so that that's all together, so that would be cleaner, right? Um, and then, uh, in terms of the two million dollars, um, you know, there's flexibility there that could be placed back into, um, either general operating account, or it could be placed in a capital reserve for, for future capital-related projects. Um, and then the, uh, debt proceeds, um, we're actually going to recommend that you look at, um, transitioning those proceeds uh, from where they're currently deposited at, which is Penn Community Bank, uh, to the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, Pliget, um, which, uh, is part of sort of the account, uh, services that they provide and sort of a value add from, from that standpoint, is they will, um, do all the required sort of IRS arbitrage rebate calculations. And so, there's going to be a proposal that's coming before you on the third as well relative to that issue, cause that, that, those are items that, that should have been done that, that, that were not done. So we'll, we'll, we'll clean all that up.
I guess, without belaboring this, I get, this gets back to a point I've probably made, I lost count of how many times now, but just the importance of a- accounting for things and then coming up with a plan to address capital projects, other projects, et cetera, across the board with all the funds that we have in a very thoughtful, direct manner. You know, we've talked about that in the past, but this is a good example of why we need to do that and.
Sure.
Really soon.
Yes.
Uh, first for you, Andy, the increase in cost, how much of that is a driver of asphalt prices, or what other elements were the big drivers for it being?
I'd say, I'd say a significant, uh, amount of that increased cost is the driver of asphalt prices. We, for instance, the last year when, uh, we bid out the road program, we received a line item price of eighty-four dollars a ton for asphalt wearing course. Uh, this year, the line item price is a hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents for a, a, a ton of asphalt wearing course. And that's really consistent, i- i- it's not like that's an outlier, that's consistent with what we've seen across other municipalities and also uh, consistent with what this township's received as far as, um, just asphalt pricing to be delivered, not installed. So, um, uh, i- i- it's a jump that we're seeing kind of throughout.
Should we be thinking about that as a long-term problem or short-term as prices change? Inflation's starting to come down, uh, specifically petroleum prices, it's a big point, that's coming down. Right, should we think next year will be not as bad as this year, as bad as this year in pricing, or?
No, I think that this is kind of the jump that might be here to stay in, 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 uh, it might level off a- a- and normalize a little bit, but I think that, uh, to go back and expect prices that are in the area of eighty-five to ninety dollars a ton might be, um, a little, uh, looking through rose-colored glasses, so to.
Right, so I need to emotionally prepare myself.
Uh, i- yes.
Okay.
I, I, I think to the extent that we're not going to modify sort of the multi-year plan that was put forth, um, you know, there, there is going to have to be, um, funds that are allocated to this beyond, um, what was initially contemplated just to be liquid fuels funds. So, um, again, in, in two thousand and twenty-three, you had contemplated, um, use, use of about seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of liquid fuels funds, and then there was an allocation of fifty thousand from the American Rescue Plan Act, so that was the seven eighty-five that we came to. Um, but again, um, assuming that, that things are generally consistent from a market perspective and also from what you're receiving in terms of liquid fuels allocation, uh, in two thousand and twenty-four, in order to, um, uh, continue with the plan that was contemplated, you're, you're, you're going to have to, you're going to have to supplement that in some fashion. Um, the liquid fuels allocation's not going to be sufficient in order to, to meet, um, what has been outlined as the plan, so.
Just one question as a follow-up to your discussion with Dan. Um, you'd mentioned moving some degree of funds from Penn Community to Pliget. What's the yield on the, the Pliget?
So I don't know what the current yield is. Um, they've been more competitive than traditional, you know, brick and mortar banks. Um, so I, I think, um, you know, for example, when we were looking at, you know, interest rates before, and, you know, we, we were looking at four and a, four and a quarter, I think Pliget at that point was even slightly higher than that. So I, I think I would expect that in addition to sort of the value add with the arbitrage rebates and, and familiar, you know, being more familiar, um, with custoding debt proceeds and all of the required, you know, things that need to be done, I, I think you're also going to see, you're going to see a higher yield.
And is that, that's a money market, uh, account that's, uh, holds treasuries then as the underlying asset, or is it? It's not a bank deposit then?
It, it, it's not a traditional bank, that, that is correct, yes, yeah. Yeah. So it's a, essentially a pool is, is what it is, uh, formed under the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act. So, um, again, more, more information will be coming on that, on that issue, but, uh,
I was gonna let you guys finish. I just had one, uh, of what I was talking to Supervisor Weiss behind the, uh, this here was just a reminder, when, when we talk about Maple Vale, in terms of timing, Andy, or whoever's talking on the contractor. Um, remember Memorial Day Parade is mustering there, so we, if we can be cognizant of all that going on and make sure it's not a mess when.
Sure, sure. When, to the extent that the, the motion is ultimately passed here, um, um, when, when would you anticipate mobilization by the?
Well, I would, I would say this, that, you know, I was going to say that for additional context that, you know, the, the township has a responsible contractor ordinance that I believe is, uh, twenty-one days for review of the contractors and the, you know, in the past, the, the board has waived that responsible contractor ordinance for road programs, simply because, uh, it's generally the same five companies that come in here and, and bid on that, uh, every year. And so, um, i- if the board wishes to expedite it, i- i- it's possible that they could partially waive the, the responsible contractor ordinance to the point where, you know, we could authorize them to, you know, i- i- we've done our due diligence as far as reviewing all the information that they submitted with their bid. Um, and therefore, you know, uh, you could partially waive it to the point where we've, it would be effectively as of today.
We essentially have a month or a month and a week? Would they get it done in that time?
I, I, I mean, I, I, I think that that's probably aggressive for them. Um, uh, you know, once, once it's get, once it gets awarded, then it's a matter of drawing up the contracts, getting it over to them to, to review and sign, them sending it back to us to review and sign and, and, and get their paperwork and then, and then mobilize to the site, so. Uh, i- i- it's an aggressive timeline, it's certainly something that I could pursue individually with the low bidder.
But we'll be mindful of, of that event, and, uh, again, to the extent that it could be done prior, then so be it, if, if, if not, we'll, we'll be mindful of that.
We still haven't finished Maple Vale, okay?
That's what this is all about, is doing, the, the drainage work.
Drainage work is completed.
Is done, yeah, yeah.
That's what this covers. Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye.
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 Eyes have it four zero. And B?
Thank you, item B is to.
Andy, I'm sorry, do, do you want to make a motion re- related to that responsible contractor item, or, or is that something that you don't, you want to just?
It matters.
Okay.
I'd rather do it than.
Sounds good.
Item B is to consider change order one for the Woodside Road Bike Path to Richard E. Pearson Construction, Inc. in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Uh, this is for a, a portion of the work that was completed. Uh, they were proceeding with, uh, installing the stone subbase underneath the, the trail when they encountered some soft soils, some additional topsoil that was, um, uh, you know, thicker than what was anticipated. Uh, they had to excavate the additional topsoil and then backfill that with, uh, a suitable stone, uh, subbase to, uh, provide a, a solid base foundation for, uh, the asphalt paving for the trail. So, uh, that was approximately seventy cubic yards, and the, the price, uh, for that was seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
I moved.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Granier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis for change order number one, any other discussion by the board?
It's an appropriate time to get an update on the overall status, I saw some photos posted on social media.
Uh, yeah, the, 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 the status is that they're proceeding ahead of schedule. Um, uh, they're, they were anticipating completing in May of this year, I think that they'll be completed by the end of the month. Uh, they're, they're proceeding with paving the, the trail and then have some, um, restoration of areas adjacent to the trail after this, and that'll be substantially complete upon that.
If I could, I was gonna say, they've made tremendous progress in the last couple of days of, on the paving. Um, and the question I have now is about the cross of, crossing of Taylorsville, now's the time to, what's the plan with Delaware Joint Toll Bridge Commission to finish that process? I know you had talked about last time, we still need a little more money, we'd have to go for a grant on that. What's that looking like, and how do we keep that moving?
Um, I believe that, uh, we're, we're, uh, reviewing and pursuing grant opportunities that are, uh, I, I, I believe that there's a grant, uh, application that we have that was, um, filed in, in January.
Okay.
And so we're waiting to hear back on that.
When do we think we'd hear?
Uh, it's realistically probably June.
Yeah, okay. But then that could still be a twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three project then.
Could be. Yes.
Uh, additionally, um, I, I did have some, uh, interface with Safe Engineering, uh, as well, our traffic engineer, and, uh, related to that intersection, i- intersection in general, there, there were some, um, items, I think, that, that came up, uh, they were punch list items that we need to sort of verify completion on. And so, within the context of sort of that conversation, we were also going to discuss the potential partnership with uh, the Toll Bridge Commission, um, to see, uh, again, um, y- y- you know, just sort of reevaluate pedestrian orientation at the intersection and see if there's an opportunity for them to, uh, to help us in some way, uh, implement those pedestrian improvements.
We think we'll have a meeting between the Toll Bridge Commission, Safe, and you guys?
Trying to, yes, um, Safe is, uh, is, is trying to coordinate that, I don't have a date in, in terms of when, when that is. But there was discussion about, you know, taking that sort of meeting and, and, and using it as an opportunity to have a conversation related to the pedestrian orientation at that intersection.
I- if you guys have any problem with getting them to the table, uh, I'd be more than happy to remind them.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I, I guess that, and I'll try not to get off track from the actual, right here, but, um, in terms of that conversation, does that agree with whatever was in the actual grant? So that, in case we are awarded, do, are we, I don't want to say stuck, but are we, is it inflexible?
Yeah, no, I think Sa- Safe was engaged as part of the discussion as it relates to the application that was submitted for funding. Um, so I would imagine that the improvements, um, that were sort of co-designed or co-contemplated by RV and Safe are, are generally consistent with the conversations that we're planning on having with the, uh, with the Toll Bridge Commission. Yeah.
Any other discussion by the board? Any public comment? Yes, none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Stane?
Aye.
Eyes have it three, zero, one. And I'm safe.
Item C is to consider change order number two for the Woodside Road Bike Path to Richard E. Pearson Construction, Inc. in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, this is for additional, um, curb work that was completed on Hayfield and Clearview Road. Uh, there was replacement of a, um, Belgian block curb uh, that was completed, uh, which was not in the initial contract. The, uh, the price that we received from the, the, the subcontractor was four thousand, nine hundred dollars, and I think we provided that in the packet. The contract allows for a ten percent, um, markup by the general contractor, and so that is what reflects the five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. So, uh, we're recommending, uh, that change order in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that, uh, we approve change order number two for the Woodside Road Bike Path, Richard E. Pearson Construction, in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Su- Supervisor Vic Granier. Any discussion by the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein?
Aye.
Eyes have it three, zero, one.
Next item is to consider pay application number two for the Woodside Road Bike Path to Richard E. Pearson Construction, Inc. in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. This is for additional costs for mobilization, maintenance and protection of traffic, temporary erosion and sediment control, and site clearing. This work has been completed, uh, and, um, we have observed that they've actually gone beyond the, the limits of what this pay application is included, so we are recommending payment in that amount.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve pay application number two for the Woodside Road Bike Path to Richard E. Pearson Construction in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-four cents.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Granier, excuse me. Pay application number two. Any comments or discussion by the board? Any public comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Stane?
Aye.
Eyes have it three, zero, one. And me?
Thank you, item E is to consider change order number three for the Maple Vale Drainage Project to Ben Cardino Contractors, Inc. in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. This was for the. the replacement of additional concrete curb along Taylorsville Road. Uh, once we had moved the uh storm pipe over away from the Verizon Duck Bank that was out there, um the the trench that was uh excavated to install the storm pipe had undermined the existing curb, and therefore we had to replace the existing curb along Taylorsville Road. Uh, and the price of that was used based on the line item price for concrete curb replacement that was in the contract uh based on the prices bid. Therefore, the change order is in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and eighty five dollars for ninety five linear feet of curb replaced.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve change order number three for the Maple Vale Drainage Project to Ben Cardino Contractors in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and eighty five dollars even.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Granier for change order number three. Any comments by the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Four zero. Excuse me.
Item F is to consider change order number four for the Maple Vale Drainage Project to Ben Cardino Contractors, Inc. As a credit to the township in the amount of six hundred and eighty three dollars and ninety cents. So this is a difference in the price of items bid and the quantities actually installed out in the field. Uh, there were less quantities installed and therefore um, the township is entitled to a credit in the amount of six hundred and eighty three dollars and ninety cents.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve change order number four for the Maple Vale Drainage Project to Ben Cardino Contractors, Inc. as a credit to the township in the amount of six hundred and eighty three dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
First made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Granier for change order number four. Uh, any comments? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, change order number four, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it four zero. Gee.
Item G is to consider pay application number two for the Maple Vale Drainage Project to Ben Cardino Contractors, Inc. in the amount of seventy three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and twenty nine cents. This would be a semi-final uh payment. It does not include the two previous change orders uh just approved. And so therefore, uh, we should expect one more final pay application uh at the next board meeting um to cover those change orders um and and the retainage. So uh, we're recommending payment as the work is completed. We're recommending payment to end the amount specified.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve pay application number two for the Maple Vale Drainage Project to Ben Cardino Contractors Inc. in the amount of seventy three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and twenty nine cents.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Granier for pay application number two for the Maple Vale Drainage Project. Any comments? Questions?
Uh, one quick one. We've resolved everything with Verizon.
Uh, yeah, so um on change order number three, uh which is an additional cost associated with the curbing that Andy had just outlined. Um, the the prior two uh elements uh that we talked about relative to the uh relative to the claim, um which was the additional design cost that RV incurred, and then also the um the re, I guess fabrication of the structure. Um, they have been paid, we'll we'll attempt to submit a supplemental claim to try to recover this additional ninety seven uh eight um in ni- night, yeah, nine thousand seven hundred and eighty five dollars. So, so we do plan on doing that uh as well.
Awesome. Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Pay application number two for Maple Vale Drainage Project, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Eyes have it four zero. Thank you, Mr. Park.
Thank you.
Item eight, Parks and Rec.
Hello, everybody. So today for item A, I have consideration of approval of the twenty twenty three chemical bid through uh Buckmans as part of the Bucks Montgomery County Aquatics Consortium. You should have the full packet in your packet.
Chair, I move that we approve the twenty twenty three pool chemical bid to Buckmans as bid through the Bucks Montgomery County Aquatic Consortium.
Second.
Second.
Think Supervisor Blondie beat you.
Oh, no.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Bundy to award the uh twenty twenty three chemical bid, pool chemical bid to Buckmans through the consortium. Any comments? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Eyes have it four zero. Item B?
Item B, consider acceptance of the proposal from Patriot Water Works for leak detection services of the lap pool in the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars.
Mr. Chair, I I move that we approve the proposal from Patriot Water Works for leak detection services for the lap pool in the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis. Got to, got to be quicker, Mrs. Blondie.
I beat him.
Seconded by Supervisor Granier to propose uh to accept the uh proposal from Patriot Water Works for leak detection services in the amount of fifty five hundred dollars. Any comments?
Good question on that. How much are we losing in pool water from the leak? Is it, it's gotta be pretty significant, right?
Well, we noticed some water loss last year. Um, I asked uh Patriot Water Works to come out and just do a quick breeze through to see if they saw any um concerns. We don't have the, I don't know how many inches a day I was, so I couldn't do the math at that time. Um, specifically, we, you would naturally lose a little bit of water every day. Um, but they'll be able to give us a better number of, you know, water loss if there's a true problem or not, and where we can, you know, they'll give us a better picture. I'd like to go through them because of their expertise and background. So um, that's why I had them come out and take an initial look. So we'll, we'll get a better picture all the way around. They do it with the pool empty, and then they'll do it with the pool full. Um, so we'll get a full scope of what was, what the issue is.
You have a secondary meter on the pool, right?
We do. Hmm.
So related to and we're, we're in under, under the uh, so we're covered by the PUC thing.
Yeah, we are. However, that that be- because of the potential timing of the of of the tariff change, um will will likely be paying for the cost associated with actually filling the pool. Because again, the the tariff is not contemplated to be effective. It's a July date. Is that, is that correct? July eighth. So um, we will follow up with Aqua just to have a conversation to see if there's any consideration on that issue, but I I don't, I don't know that uh
That's an issue. So we're gonna, hmm, the tariff takes effect in July. Can we get a credit for that? Can anybody get a credit for that around the town?
That's something I think we're, but procedurally, we have to see what the next step is once that decision's finalized. So how that would be done.
Alright.
I don't know the answer to that. As you know, exceptions were filed by the other parties.
Yep.
And that delays it a little bit, but it's still, that would help. Uh, once they're disposed of, I think the the effective date will still be July eighth. Now, what that means, we'll, we'll follow up and find out.
Yeah, maybe in, uh, wh- while I said we're gonna request consideration, they may be reluctant to consider that consideration because of its impact on on the entire customer base as opposed to just us as a, as as a single user.
There's other ways we could fill the pools, too.
We're looking
Yeah, we're looking.
Routs.
Yeah, we are looking at alternative routes, uh including, you know, the potential of hauling, hauling water um and and trying to quantify what the what the cost of that would be relative to the anticipated disposal fees. So we are, we are looking at that issue and trying to look at alternatives.
We're, we're also taking a look to see if we can keep the water in the pool um instead of draining fully every year. So that's another option, but it doesn't help us this year still, nonetheless.
And then I'm just curious. They're all, they're all interrelated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should we be looking to file an exception as well? The logic, well, the logic behind the decision escapes me.
Yeah, the uh, the time for filing exceptions has expired. I had submitted that to um the board, uh, I guess the day we got the decision. There was a ten day window to file exceptions. We didn't see anything that was gonna be viable that would be a a prudent spending of township money for that purpose. Um, the only thing that could possibly have been is to have something prospectively, which uh the a- the judge was fairly consistent. She was only gonna consider what was before her, which was everything retroactive. So they're gonna, there is gonna be a rate case next year. So that would be the time to raise that, and I think we, I certainly we would encourage the township to do that at that time.
Well, how about if we take the position that even though we are, you know, maybe a late to the gate, we could support the people who have said, this is an illogical decision, and just write a letter of support, may get nowhere into the record, but um you know, it is something we talked about with Aqua, uh with all of the bidders. It's something that we took a position on, and I'm a little disappointed by the turn of events, but is what it is.
Dave, when you say there's gonna be a rate case next year, does that mean they're going in to try and look to raise rates, or is that something?
Whether, uh, raise rates or affect rates, yeah, that that was what was said at the hearing, because next year, I think that's the next, twenty forty four is the year. Yeah. You know.
Other than what?
Every three years, every three years.
Has it already been three years since?
Rates haven't gone up since twenty nineteen. It'll be six years. But that's a difference, that's a different story. Any further discussion on this uh, this motion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it four zero. Item C?
Um, item C, it's consider approval of the purchase of relay devices for the pool for summer, for the pool and summer camp in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollar, or four thousand seven hundred and seventy twenty cents. Um, and then enter into a service agreement for five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Um, it receive that.
Air motion?
I moved.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Lewis to consider to approve the relay devices. Any comments?
I got it. What is a relay device?
Thank you.
You didn't watch the video?
I sent, yeah.
I missed your video.
Well, I'll, 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 I'll just go brief overview. Um, the staff came to me with a problem and um a solution um about communication with the staff. Um, I sent out a memo kind of with their words about um how they, it's a, it's a tiny um almost walkie talkie type device um that's waterproof for her up to thirty minutes. She falls in the pool, there's no issue or concern. Um, in the event of emergency, they could just push a button and call the managers right over to them in order for them to communicate back and forth, say they have a customer they need to address, and they can't address them right now because they're on stand, they can call um someone over for help. Um, in addition to that, it has a couple of little fun features like a translator. So if we ever have a translation issue um which we do sometimes with summer camp, some of our campers have varying backgrounds. Um, with parents, we can use the relay device in order to communicate better uh with those parents. So um, essentially just talking to the device, device dictates it's having that that translator there on staff. Um, now having the camp into sites, both at Edgewood and at the community center and traveling in different directions on different days. Um, it also helps us track our uh staff who are carrying them. So at home base, we'll see where they are on a trip, and if parents are asking, are they far out, or are they getting close, or whatever, we could tell them specifically how far out they are um from. So there's a, there's a lot of different benefits of having a relay device. It's kind of like a um better walkie talkie. In the off season, we can use them for things like Veterans Day Parade, um where we have had uh less expensive walkie talkies, but not be able to reach each other um all throughout the parade or Community Day or that type of thing, too. So we can even use them in the off season for varying other um activities and events.
They have a lot of coverage, essentially what we're saying.
They have a lot of, they use a, almost like cellphone type coverage. Um, and and they have, I mean, they're very high tech. Um, but they're a very neat way to, for us to track and keep our our participants safe.
How many? Twenty seven, is that what I'm saying?
I believe it was.
Yeah, I think it's tw- twenty, twenty seven devices and then two sort of desktop licenses. So I think there were twenty nine licenses, twenty seven devices, yes.
What's the warranty on these things? They're, they're not cheap, so I'm curious about the warranty.
You know, I don't know all the warrant, warranty information offhand.
Any other discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Eyes have it four zero. And item D? It's RV's proposal.
Um, the last item D is consider RV, uh, RV's proposal for services relating to Veteran Square Projects. Um, I thi- I believe the packet is in your hand with varying phases. Um, so I mean, at this point, I'd recommend maybe going uh for phase one, kind of getting a better picture of what the project is and how much it will cost um officially, as we did apply for that grant, and we did not receive it. So it kind of gave us an idea of where our shortfall is as far as budgeting. Then we can come back to the board and ask for um, you know, how how we plan to move forward that project.
Just wanna, uh, the board approved phase one of the proposal tonight. Is that correct, what you're saying?
Yeah, I believe, uh, well.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't, I don't know. Are are you comfortable with that issue? Again, I I, we wouldn't proceed with work and but the phase one will obviously be the, where we start. Um, but to the extent that we don't proceed to subsequent phases, um I assume we're, we'll just be billed for the phase one work. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is to get an actual estimate.
An actual design. So you have a conceptual design for the improvements at Veteran's Square. Um, so again, I know there was, uh, at our last meeting, there was some discussion about um, uh, potentially looking at self-funding that using internal resource. Um, but in order to provide you with a clear picture on what the actual costs are going to be, there's additional design work that needs to, needs to occur. And so intention, again, as Monica has indicated, would be to uh proceed with design, come back with more concrete plans, and then at that point, the board can make a determination as to how it would like to proceed with the project.
I I I will say that, you know, phase two is permitting, which would be necessary for any of the design, and that's permitting through um the Bucks County Conservation District uh where it's inherent, we've assumed that, you know, an NPDS permit, which is a, a stormwater permit for earth disturbances over one acre would not be needed for this project. Right now, we have a concept plan, and this would be development of that concept plan to, a full design for pitable documents.
So your recommendation, just in terms of sequencing work, would be, uh, if the board is so inclined to approve sort of phase one and phase two um to proceed, is that, is that what you're saying?
It, it, right, yeah. I mean, wi- with the understanding that there's probably uh a month of back and forth with the Conservation District for permitting once we submit to the, to the Conservation District. So
Yeah, so you're looking at getting in, ENS plan, erosion control plan completed, but you don't need a full blown.
Correct.
So, and essentially, you're doing that ENS plan as part of phase one and that thirteen thousand and all your other design plans and your survey, and then you would get the permits locked in under phase two. Monica's point. You raised a good point, Monica. I'll say that upfront. Um is it, do we want to take it? It sounds like, correct me if I, if I'm misunderstanding you. It sounds like you want to get the ser- obviously need the survey information and and basic site information, and then at, starting with concept design. And then that'll is that, do we expect the design to potentially change? Because what he's, what what they're recommend, what phase one and phase two as described here would do in the proposal essentially get you a design that's done and give you a permit that's done, and you're locked in, for lack of a better term, but that's essentially what you're gonna bid. Um, and Andy, correct me if I misspeak on any of this, please. Um, so do you still want flexibility in terms of design prior to getting permits? Is that what you're asking for? Or are you good with what the design is, and you just want to get a permit, then then that'll tell us what we have to bid. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I think conceptually, we already have a baseline design. We kind of know where we want to go. Um, if David and Andy want to jump in here.
Yeah, I I I think what you're trying to achieve is to, you know, seeing the, the fluctuation of construction prices recently, i- i- it's basically, uh, once the design is complete almost like a reaffirmation of a cost estimate the, to ensure that the design is still matches up with the funding that's available for the project.
Yeah.
The other way of saying, we want to, we want the design completed, so whenever we get funding and can bid it, we can take it off the shelf and say it's, it's ready to go.
Yes, a- and we do have some funding set aside for pieces of this already, but um, Andy will be able to s- get, set the bigger pic, broader picture to complete the whole project.
Just want to make sure I understand where you're trying to get it to.
Hmm.
And then in terms of um, the assumptions and the assumptions and everything that I left there. Look over, Andy. This is a it's a not to exceed proposal. So am I correct in assuming this is a time and materials not to exceed? So if you don't if you don't spend enough hours, if you don't spend up to.
Yeah, yeah, we're only going to build for the amount of time that we spent on completing the project.
It's not a fixed price.
Correct.
Now, do you have anything in your design where you would look at doing any retaining walls or anything like that? And I ask because the first the first exclusion is structural.
No, the I mean, the grading on site is relatively flat and therefore no anticipated retaining walls.
And then the next and we're not we're not building any lighting into this design, I'm assuming.
That was not the intent.
I'm just looking at the exclusions to make sure that we're all covered because la- last time I had a few tweaks to it that I think it proved things a little bit. You've got a couple that are directly, you already talked about the NIPD's permits and stuff like that. We're not doing any additional impervious rights, no stormwater management design required.
There is some stormwater management design that would be required, but it we anticipate putting a rain garden in on site that would that would capture that.
But it won't hit the threshold that requires a chapter one oh two. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
We'll have to meet township requirements, but.
Exactly.
We don't have any concerns about EIAs or ESAs, I should say. We don't. We don't have any natural resources issues that we're aware of at all.
Correct. Yeah.
Exclusions. We talked about it. Yeah, okay. All right, that's fine. I just look over those.
Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
What is the motion exactly? As we.
Oh, to to let phase one and phase two, let Andy make the make the actual design, the project and give us an estimate of how it's going to cost. To make a bid, make a bid ready, to make a bid ready.
We were saying.
Yeah, to make a bid ready.
Okay. And I'm an eye if you didn't get.
Four zero. We got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thanks, Monica. And nine, Mr. Fuller.
Good evening, everyone. A few items tonight. Item one, I have here the to consider pay application number one for the Police Department renovations to S J Thomas in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve pay application number one for Police Department renovations to S J Thomas, the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie to consider pay application number one for the Police Department renovations. Any comments or questions by the board?
You've joined us. Chief, are you satisfied with the work to date relative to the invoice?
I I am, and I want to thank Derek because he's been very active with checking it out and inspecting the work and making sure the contractor performed as he said he would. And I just want you to know that the original approved amount was two hundred sixteen thousand, nine sixty-six. So we have about thirty-six hundred hours to go. And I'm hopeful that it'll come in with that, but we did have some issues during the project unforeseen. We had some duck work actually come down in the ceiling that we were not old duck work that had to be replaced. And we also had to put some sound barrier between the detectives and the tax office. We didn't realize that until the walls were up and the drywall was up, that you could still hear conversation back and forth. So we had to add some insulation. So I don't know what pay application number two will be, but I'm hopeful it's within budget.
We know we're going to be complete with the project time wise?
They're they're basically done now. They're probably ninety-eight percent. They they're waiting for a few parts and pieces to finish out the one bathroom with the ADA accessories and a little bit of tile work. But other than that, they have cleaners scheduled for this week to do a deep clean of all the surfaces and wax the floors and the police will be able to move into their facilities probably within the next two weeks. And then we just need to finish off the tax office bathroom, maybe in the next three weeks, just depending on those parts for the the ADA pieces.
Related to that, Derek, in the documentation, there's an adjusted contract price relative to invoice one on page up at page three. Is that what we into the two eighteen nine ninety and change?
Yes, that's what chief is referring to is is the ballpark right now. I know some of that work is kind of up in the air and that's why we're hoping to be right at that approved two sixteen, two sixteen, three thirty, four, whatever was the prior approved. But we're just trying to work on this last few pieces for the bathroom. It's kind of just up in the air. We were working with them to try to get more readily available to kind of speed it along. But it's looking more like two eighteen is probably a firm number at this time.
Need help with drywall, chief, to save some money.
Yeah.
Any other comments by the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, pay application number one for the Police Department renovations, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have a four zero. Item B.
Item B, I have before you the consider approval of the twenty twenty-three Bucks County Consortium Road Materials Bid. That would be for all of our asphalt materials and aggregate materials that we use for our in-house services. That detailed package should be included within you with each and every vendor that we plan on using for this year's stone and aggregate purchases.
Air motion?
So moved.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the twenty twenty-three Bucks County Consortium Road Materials Bid.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie to approve the consortium bid for twenty twenty-three. Mr. Fuller, did you want to give anything else on that?
Uh, no, besides we want to get to work, we have a lot of roads that need to be patch and paved. So our guys are anxious to get the asphalt going.
Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have a four zero. Item C.
Item C, I have before you the consider approval of the purchase of a twenty twenty-two BY seven thousand pound tandem axle eighteen foot utility trailer from Bestline Equipment for a total cost of six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents. That trailer is used by our open space basin maintenance crews for their lawnmower per use purpose.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-two BY seven thousand pound tandem axle eighteen foot utility trailer from Bestline Equipment for a total cost of six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Motion made by, excuse me, Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie. Excuse me.
You have a question if you don't want.
Any questions?
Yes, please.
Yeah. You need a minute?
Oh, okay. Yeah, obviously, this is you mentioned this is used for a lawnmower for the stormwater basins. I'll use this as a plug for the EAC's plan or proposal, whatever you want to call it to do an analysis of Basin Naturalization Program, which if if that came, not that it would cover everything, obviously, but if that came to fruition, might save money on things like this and manpower. So.
It would. Yeah, it would. It would help. Unfortunately, we'd still visit a lot of the areas, you know, along the right of way and things like that. So it yes, it would. It would greatly help the manpower and the labor expenses on the numerous, probably eighty some basins that we visit.
As the liaison to the EAC, I would encourage you, I there was some conversation with with our last director about how to do that. And there was some interest. So we'd love to bring that back to life a little bit and see what we'll do within a, you know, reasonably so that things function accordingly.
Yes, there there are certain bases that basins that would probably not be feasible for just for proximity of residents, but there are others that are prime candidates. And I believe that with with a lot of the MS four work that Andy's has in the next few years, quite a few of them, I can't remember the quantity, but our plan to be modified and possibly taken on.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the incorporation of these into the PRP. Obviously, you know, it's somewhat of a unique circumstance, not unique to you, but unique generally that that you have ownership and O and M responsibilities associated with these basins. And so it does provide, you know, an opportunity for project sites that that other jurisdictions don't necessarily have. And so basin naturalization fits fits right into to that. But Andy can speak to that.
Yeah, so we have within the pollution reduction plan, a number of basin retrofits that we identify them as, but it's really a conversion of flood control basin into a flood control basin and water quality improvement basin. And so and and, you know, the no mo zones or the the seed mix that goes into the bottom of that is certainly a portion of that. I think that there are, the pollution reduction plan covers the portions of the township that are watersheds that are impaired from sediment. But the the program that I think the EAC refers to is basins all throughout the township that not necessarily certainly do include the impaired watersheds, but could include remaining watersheds within the township as well.
Yeah, there's just much more generalized. And for you, I wrote a master's thesis on this twenty some odd years ago. So this is something I've done for a long time with great interest in. So I will try to support that as much as I can.
Yeah, I know that we were kicking around for a long time, the basin over by the Moore Morrisville border because it is in an impaired area and because it's not near a lot of houses and because it looks ideal. And yet here we are. So I would love it if we could move forward with that.
Any other comments, questions by the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have a four zero. Item D.
Item D, I have before you consider approval of the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Marathon DF one hundred tar kettle with agitation from asphalt care for a total cost of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. This is to replace an inoperable tar kettle that the department has and subsequently is hoping to get rid of.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Marathon DF one hundred tar kettle with agitation from asphalt care for a total cost of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And I'd like to add that this is in budget within a dollar.
Yes, exactly.
So you're coming in just under a dollar.
Just a dollar.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie, approve the purchase. Any questions or comments other than that? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Eyes have a four zero. Item E.
Item E.
I'd say that's a good segue, right? Because you were one dollar under budget, but now you're you're realizing revenue that was not contemplated. Yeah, yes.
Make some money. So I have before you item E, it's to consider authorizing the sale of various surplus items via municipal. And again, that detailed information was before you in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Blondie, seconded by Supervisor Lewis. Any comments?
How come no one took us up on that? What was it nineteen ninety-two Ford Taurus that was in?
That's a good item there. Couldn't drive it anywhere. That's all.
Yeah.
So Derek, just in summary, the the total value of the items that that are contemplated to be closed of, which is largely junk that's been sitting out back that now is being put to productive use. I'm sorry.
Yeah, valuable assets.
Yeah, as as these bidders consider the junk that they just.
Person junk is one.
So as before, as per my recommendation provided to you, we're at a total potential income of sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. And again, you brought up the Ford Taurus. My recommendation for that is obviously to first donate it to the Yardly Makefield Firehouse. They'll do training on it, cut it up into pieces, and then we have a scrapper already lined up to take it away at six hundred dollars. So making more money that way and those guys can train on it.
So if nobody buys it, that's what you can do. They at least.
No one bought. I mean, actually, some of the highest bidder was five hundred and twenty-five dollars. So we have more value to donate it to the firehouse and then allow a scrapper to take it at six hundred dollar value. So.
Any other comments? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Eyes have a four zero. Great.
I'd just like to thank Derek and your your staff in particular for for doing that work. Again, I know there was a lot of items back there that were there for quite some time. So thank you. Thank you for doing that.
But a lot of trees grown through some of them. But yeah, no, they did good. Now that now the effort is getting the various bidders in here and load it out. So there's some more work ahead of us.
Does it not to labor this? Does this guarantee that all this material is removed from the property after this is done? Are we going to?
I had people already lined up wanting to come before this meeting to pick up their items.
So it's all been.
They're for the most part, maybe there's one or two that may not be a no show, but for the most part, I would say, yeah, people want it.
Item F, sir.
Item F, I have here, which is a is a prior project that was bid and subsequently not awarded at the time. It is the South Drive Culvert Replacement Project. I have three items. Do we do we want to lump them together as one? That's up to you guys. But I have before you the South Drive Culvert Replacement Project, the first in this approval would be to consider RVE's proposal for the bidding and construction management inspection services. Bullet two would be to authorize the acceptance of the proposal from contact in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars to furnish and assemble the culvert. And item three would be the last part would be the authorization to bid the demolition of the existing culvert site preparations, backfill and site restoration. And you can speak to it a little bit more, but but for the most part, Andy went back, did some good VE options with that project that was over budget in the fall of twenty-two. And what he's come up with is to have contact who is a is a co-stars vendor, they can actually furnish directly to us the culvert and actually assemble the culvert. And we will need a contractor to physically do the site prep and backfill and restoration work, things like that, once the culvert's in place by contact. So we we believe this will be a cost savings overall when we when you combine both items together.
A cost savings over the previous that was received. I I think we we had contemplated and discussed adding a little bit of scope as far as extending the limits of paving because South Drive, you know, has deteriorated, the pavement has deteriorated such to the point where it makes sense to pave the entire length of South Drive versus just the area that's around the culvert. So that would be incorporated into the bid documents as well. Questions by the board?
Can you very briefly speak to the current condition of the culverts?
Uh, so when we looked at the the culvert last year, it was I I would say that it was in poor condition, not to the point where we had to limit the amount of weight that was going over the culvert, but there were certainly some existing culvert that showed where it was rusted through at some points. There was portions of the culvert that were that were beginning to buckle. And so we had monitored the the culvert throughout winter and saw no significant deterioration from the winter. Thank goodness, we had a mild winter and not a lot of freeze thaw cycles to go through, but it it it's something where we believe it would not last through another winter cycle. And so now's the time to to strike, so to speak. You have a motion on this?
What's that? We don't. We do not have a motion.
Let's entertain a motion to consider.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the South Drive Culvert Replacement Project as described by Derek.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Granger to.
Granier to author for the South Drive Culvert Replacement Project as described by our Public Works Director. Any further comment by the board?
The only thing that I would add for contact context is that the manufacturer's contact. So that's why I made the mistake, but the schedule, you know, there's a ten week lead time on the on the culvert. And so we would then initially, you know, engage with contact to order the culvert so that they can get that manufactured. And then we anticipate the the schedule for construction to be around mid-July, which would, you know, be after the school season and before the next school season. So.
Yeah, so by December, October, it should be there.
Correct.
Any public comment? There are none of call a question. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Eyes have a four zero. Thank you, Mr. Vol.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I'm ten managers.
Okay, just a couple of items for the board's considerations this evening. First, I'd like to thank Derek and Andy publicly for sort of the coordination that's that's going on between. You know, Derek, the Public Works Department and our consulting engineer, they're they're really sort of collaborating collectively on on some of this engineering work. And that's that's is very much appreciated. So just wanted to express that. And then just some informational items. One item that you had discussed at a prior meeting had to do with the work that was previously being done in terms of the adoption of an employee handbook and sort of related personnel policies. Solicitor and I are going to be meeting on Friday to sort of review the status of that. And so we're hopeful that in the relatively near future, we'll be able to bring that back to you for your review and consideration. So I just wanted to report on on that issue. And then just as a follow up to some of the prior discussion regarding ARPA dollars, I'll make sure to between now and the next meeting to sort of get an accounting of where we stand on that. The twenty twenty-three budget, you know, contemplated, I think, spending down that those funds to a little over three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. We have added additional items that have been brought before you, just in terms of my tenure, that were contemplated to be paid from from that fund. So we'll we'll get a more sort of accurate accounting of that, and we'll report back on that for the board's information as as you're moving forward. And then in terms of looking at sort of creating a strategic sort of financial plan, we're also in the midst of those conversations as well, and we'll we'll continue to to work on that and ultimately have something that that hopefully feeds into sort of the context of of the the budget conversation, which probably should start sooner this year than perhaps has in the past. So we're working on those items. In terms of an action item, this is again is a follow up to prior discussion that the board had relative to the Patterson Farm property. If you recall, the board had authorized the township manager to prepare a request for proposals or a bid document relative to environmental remediation on on the site in following through with the board's direction on that in in coordination with Andy and also internal staff. There is some additional assessment that needs to take place really to inform what that bid document would look like. So there is a proposal in your packet from from RVE. Andy can address sort of the specifics in terms of what what the proposal is contemplating. And then also, just as a refresher, sort of provide you with some context on what previously was done. But ultimately, we are recommending some additional work to try to refine that scope so that when we do go to market, we can eliminate some of the uncertainty that a respondent would have with that bid, because otherwise they're going to, you know, potentially price risk into the proposal that they're providing. So I don't know, Andy, if you want to provide just a general sort of summary of of what's been done to date and what what you believe is necessary in order to position us to refine, you know, put together a refined bid package.
Sure, I think I think we're talking about the Patterson Farm site and and what was previously completed in two thousand and eighteen was a environmental assessment or an identification of as far as the site areas, this would be identification of contaminants both in in the buildings and around the buildings. I think we identified that there was lead contamination around the Satterthwaite House and and portions of the the barns behind that. And then also over on the yard of Yardley site. This next step is to really identify a horizontal and vertical profile, so to speak, of the extent of the contamination that's on within the soils on the site. And so it would be sampling around all, I believe it's twenty-seven buildings over there. Fifteen buildings, I'm sorry. So this would be just kind of systematically stepping out, you know, a certain number of feet from the the perimeter of the building, testing the soil, determining the the depth of the contamination and the the horizontal extent of contamination. Obviously, if they if they get an area where they reach and and lead levels are below what the the threshold is, well, then additional testing beyond that might not be necessary. And so this is really just to kind of get a a horizontal extent and a vertical extent of the contamination that is on the site. That would then enable us to better provide information on how to remediate.
Gives you an area, gives you an area of impact that a contractor, because most of the costs associated with lead contamination is removal of soil. So it's
Exactly. Yes.
One.
Make a motion first.
Yep, sure. I'll make a motion to approve RVE's environmental assessment proposal for the Patterson Farm property.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Granier, seconded by Supervisor Lewis to approve RVE's environmental assessment proposal for Patterson Farm property.
Thank you. So essentially, for those here and watching at home, we're we know there's lead contamination in the soils of Patterson Farm. Now we're trying to figure out the the location and the extent of it so that we can then at some point go to a remediation contractor to address it, removing materials, et cetera. When I, Andy, I guess my one question is, we're very specific about lead here. You know, when when removing these materials and they have to go to a receiving facility, there are other constituents that need to be addressed, depending on who where they're being received.
Yeah, so.
Members actually knows a lot more about that than I do. He wants to speak to that, but so I just want to make sure that we're testing the right, testing for everything that we might need, that we might come across and not find ourselves in a bind.
Yeah.
The lead testing, but I just.
Right now, there's a there's basically a baseline test that when you send send the samples to the lab, they'll they'll test for a number of items and and lead is just one portion of that. And so that's our intention is to get a identification of the number of contaminants or beyond lead that that could potentially have an impact on the cost of remediation.
As part of this, do we need to, or would you recommend that we call out the specific type of like? Forget what the parameters, is it DOT versus some other, whatever they are? I forget the list off the top of my head. It's been a while. Do we need to, just because there's different prices for testing, that's all. Do we need to call that out? Or have you made some assumption that we can just make sure that that's efficient?
Yeah, I think that we've we've made some assumptions within this proposal to identify a cost per sample and 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 for laboratory testing and then also to identify the parameters for what is what gets tested at the lab.
Any comments? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have a four zero. Item eleven, solicitors report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. An executive session started tonight at six thirty. It concluded just before this meeting started. All board members who are present tonight were present at the executive session along with myself, Mr. Kratzer and the chief. Litigation items and informational items were discussed at the executive session. And also outside counsel was also present, discussed some litigation items too during that executive session. I have three rather hopefully quick items to discuss. First is to consider approval of resolution twenty-three dash eight for a revised pump and haul agreement for the Prickett Preserve Land Development Project. I think it was March first when the original resolution was passed. My partner Barbara Kirk advises, because she's working on this as far as the review and approval process with the council for Prickett Preserve, Steve Harris. She reports that the DEP would not accept the original signed pump and haul agreements since the Act five thirty-seven plan has not yet been changed to reflect Aqua's ownership of the sewer system. They want the township named as the owner of the system before it would approve. Mr. Harris reports that he got a response from DEP that said the resolution and the municipal agreement references the proposed sewer facilities being dedicated to Aqua. However, the Act five for the thirty-seven plan for the sale of the township's system to Aqua has not yet been approved. As such, the township continues to be the permit of its sewer system. That's why we have to prepare an amended resolution now. We don't think there's going to be any challenge with the DEP eventually doing that. It's it's a ministerial project. The agreement that's attached to the revised resolution does provide that the township is fully indemnified by Prickett Preserve and the the developer for purposes of this. So I just want to make sure everybody understands why we're doing this tonight. So we would ask for consideration to approve that resolution.
Our motion?
So moved.
So moved.
There are second. Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Bundy to approve resolution twenty-three dash eight. Any comments by board?
I guess clarifying question for like. Why are, I'm not trying to, why are we still in this situation that it's still the township and not Aqua?
I don't, I, as I understand, it's totally, you know, if you make an answer.
Yeah, it.
It takes a long time.
I mean, yeah, some of some of it is just the the time associated with process. If you if you recall, there were, there was prior discussion regarding the Act five thirty-seven special study. Remember, there were there were items that the department had and I had provided a copy of correspondence that was sent back in in twenty twenty-two. We're still working through those items with Ebert Engineering at this point. So.
I just timeline perspective, the deal closed first week of March twenty-two, right?
March third, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. Is that by correspondence, you mean, is that the letter that I think our former township manager got in June or July?
That is correct. Yes.
For several months.
Yes.
Okay. Now we're addressing that.
Yeah, we're we're, yes, Ebert is addressing those those items. I do need to follow up with him to determine where that is in in process, but again, as Dave has indicated, we're not anticipating any issue with that. And this is just, you know, the resolution or the amendment of the resolution is necessitated by the fact that the permit has not been transferred at this point. And so that that's that's where we're at.
Like, I guess, Dave, if five thirty-seven plan is finally transferred or permit's transferred.
The permit, yeah.
Would we have to do another resolution?
Depends on whether the the, how far along the development is, whether we have to, if the pump and haul agreement expires by virtue of the fact that they're they're connected, then we wouldn't have to. But obviously, that we don't, we don't know. We might have to.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we incur any cost by doing that?
No, 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 there, in fact, there's an escrow that they set aside as part of the, they being the developer sets aside for this. Yeah.
Work is frustrating. So just want to make sure I'm clear.
That's you. Questions or comments by the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Eyes have a four zero.
Thank you. Next is approval of the ordinance to vacate Old Oxford Valley Road. That was advertised, as you recall, it was authorized to advertise. Again, I don't recall the specific meeting. It was either the March first or March fifteenth meeting. I think it was March fifteenth. And it was advertised on April fifth. And therefore, it's ready to for approval. And then the disposition will be according to the joining landowners. And of course, there are easements that do run with the the land according to the survey.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Granier to approve ordinance to vacate Old Oxford Valley Road. Any comments by the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Those.
Thank you. Finally, under my report.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did you approve or did you deny?
I opposed.
You're muted.
Eyes have it.
I'm just COVID.
Gotcha. Eyes have a four zero.
Okay, all right. The last item under my report is to consider approval of resolution twenty-three dash nine amending resolutions, number, resolution numbers three twenty-three and three twenty-six regarding the composition of the Township's Historical Commission. As the board and the public might recall, a meeting or two ago, there's discussion about appointing members to the Historical Commission. It seemed to be the sentiment of the board was to want to include those people. And the problem is, I think there weren't enough vacant seats, so to speak, at the time. So the idea was to increase the number of seats on the Historical Commission. The two resolutions referred to in the this resolution are the two that, number one, that created the the Historical Commission with five members and then within the same year, increased that to seven. So the this this resolution would increase the membership from seven to nine.
Do I hear a motion to?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve resolution number twenty-three dash nine amending resolutions three twenty-three and three twenty-six regarding the composition of the Township's Historical Commission.
Harris, second.
I'll second.
Motion, motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Granier to approve resolution twenty-three dash nine. Any comments by the board?
Yeah, I just. Yeah, thank you. So, I mean, obviously, you know, it's great that we have so many volunteers right now. But if with, if this does in fact pass, quorum for this committee going forward will be six, five. I just, I worry about that because, you know, sometimes attendance is is not always as robust as we would like it to be. And, you know, just because people aren't members of the committee doesn't mean they can't help do the work of the committee. So I just, I know it's all good intention and I I love that we have all these volunteers, but I have some concerns.
I can, I think I was last, not this year, but last couple of years, I was the liaison in the historic commission. And I'll just echo what Supervisor Blondie just said, you know, there were many meetings, but we essentially a couple of members that were able to show up. There was no quorum, and it was just really less of a meeting and more of a conversation between a couple of people. And so whenever there's whenever there's a need to provide some recommendation to the township, it, I I think increasing it this to this level. I think what you're getting at, Ms. Blondie, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it becomes difficult to get a formal recommendation because of having trouble to meet a quorum in in the future. So I I appreciate it and maybe maybe lean more towards putting, kind of like we do with zoning hearing board, having alternate members. But I'm a little concerned about making sure that we can meet quorum, but.
Would would my fellow members be comfortable if we had three alternates, up to three alternates?
Yeah.
So preserve the current membership number, but have three alternates in it.
Right, yeah.
I can, what you'd have to do, I guess the best way to do this would be to table this motion, and then I'll present a revised resolution at the next meeting with that information.
What's the current, just?
It's good, this is seven now, would be nine with this with this.
I almost want to move it down to five, given historic, sorry for the wording, but the historic attendance levels. And then do three on top of that. I don't know, just because.
The board actually, this, was it this week? And we had two, three, four or five? And there were two openings. So there was only one person, I think, that wasn't there. So I'm fully flexible on it. What's interesting is we've had a resurgence of folks that have wanted to apply and be engaged. And so, I mean, there's a lot of ways to accommodate that. I think folks would be okay with the alternate status. And that we had five applicants for currently two positions, right? So we could certainly make that tonight if you were so inclined.
I can, if you want to vote down this resolution and then have another resolution with whatever composition you want, I can then prepare that for your signature. Pair that for your signature at the next meeting. That's that's not a problem.
To your point, I a couple of the members are become are. Pretty good at getting the word out now on social media.
Yeah.
Urging folks to. You know, apply for a role.
Yeah.
Commission and. I'll use your radio voice and say it again, but. But it's good at that. I'm not. So I think it's great that that's happening, but long term, I think. Boards of seven or more get become difficult to. Get enough people all the time. That's my concern.
And just remember, like, a meeting couldn't even start until there was a quorum.
Yeah.
Right? So but whatever, you know, anybody wants, I'm just my caution.
Well, you may I just ask a question? So you currently have you have two vacancies, right? So you have five active seated members.
Yeah.
So perhaps. I mean, you you could, in theory, you could have. Five and, you know, five primary members, five alternate members, and and that may allow for expansion. Again, I I don't know how the members would feel about. Alternate status versus primary status, but. I think, you know, it's whatever the board's prerogative, but but the the concept that's being raised or the concern that's being raised is. You know, is 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 potentially valid depending on circumstances.
I'm totally. Yeah. But I'm, yeah, I'm I'm certainly open to. I think what we want is to encourage people, and particularly because the. I think we've ignited some real interest and passion in the community, and I want to make sure that everybody can be a part of that. That's my main goal. So I I can withdraw my motion now if that would folks would make feels comfortable. And then. Is there a way in which we could point two of the folks this evening? Because there are two vacancies.
With the with the composition, because you you have seven, you could point them out if you have. Two vacancies and you only have five now, you could.
Yeah, that that's what I'm suggesting to help jump.
Idea with to to make a new resolution.
To add three alternates.
Adding three alternates. With seven or five supervisor. Leave it at five and and create three alternate positions or four alternate positions.
Uh, three alternates?
It's current currently at seven, correct?
It's seven.
Seven. You wouldn't be creating vacancies with.
Right, right.
So seven, we have seven plus three. You probably want a new resolution, a resolution.
Yeah, so keep it at seven.
We always get four people to attend to get a quorum. They're al- always being.
With all.
Positive turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, with the alternates, they count, though, for quorum.
Sure.
So that's why I think you would solve the problem.
And there's nothing that would prevent those alternates from. I I don't know how alternates function now, but they they have they have the ability to attend every meeting and participate in every meeting. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They could they could they could, you know, alternates can participate. Before public comment.
Yeah, so. With that, and sensing you guys are all comfortable if I just with. Mr. Chair, I'd like to withdraw my motion in a second or?
I, yes, I agree.
Okay.
Motion is withdrawn.
And then we'll have a new version with alternates?
Yeah, what you guys want to make sure I understand this direction. Five and three?
Or no, we would.
Seven and.
Seven and.
Three, three. Okay. Seven and three. Okay, yeah, I I'll have that ready for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Okay, that's my report, but I guess I still have zoning hearing board is next for me to discuss, correct? A B and C. And item number D has been removed. The agenda per the discussion at the beginning of the meeting, so we have three items to start out with. First, under twelve A, appeal number twenty-three dash nineteen ninety-seven, Andrew and Jackie Cushion, Terra Floor Design Associates. Appeal for the property located at three Alton Road, tax parcel numbers two zero dash zero four zero dash zero zero two dash oh oh one and two zero dash oh three eight dash oh seven four. Requesting a variance from township ordinance two hundred dash twenty-three point capital B in order to install an in-ground concrete pool. Concrete pool deck and in a patio which would increase the impervious surface from the existing twenty-two point nine percent. It's twenty-three point nine four percent, where eighteen percent is the allowable amount. It's a very common application that stormwater. Mitigation measures included in the application. We recommend deferral unless the board has other. Sentiments. Hearing none. Item B, appeal twenty-three dash two dash two zero zero two Villas Zavistoskus. Appeals for the property located two oh eight A Morris Lane, Washington Crossing, Pennsylvania, but in Lower Mayfield Township, tax parcel two zero dash zero two eight dash oh three oh. Applicant request the variance from township zoning ordinance two hundred dash fourteen. In order to construct a four hundred and fourteen square foot addition, which would increase the impervious surface from the existing seven point two percent. To nineteen point six percent, where thirteen percent is the allowable amount. Again, stormwater mitigation measures have been included in the application. We recommend deferral. Hearing no other sentiment. The final matter before you tonight under zoning hearing board. Appeal twenty-three dash three dash two zero zero three Thomas Philpot. Appeals for the property located eight Oakdale Boulevard in the township tax parcel two zero dash zero four two dash zero nine nine. Requesting a variance from the township zoning ordinance two hundred dash sixty-nine point capital A fourteen small A. In order to construct a shed two feet from the property line. Again, we recommend deferral unless there's other sentiment. It's not in the flood zone, so. I hear no sentiment. Otherwise, that is all I have for that. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Item thirteen, community development. Gentlemen, if you could identify yourselves for the records, just so we have that be forced tonight.
Yes, I'm Stephen Zafudo.
Keith Dumack, Dumack Engineering.
Thank you. And you're here on behalf of the applicant for the twelve seventy-three Lindenhurst Road. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. You want to describe for the board briefly what the project, you know, the most of us know, but just for the public, so they know what the project is located at the. West side of Lindenhurst Road at its intersection with Quarry Road. Is that correct?
Okay, yes, sir. It's on the west side of Lindenhurst. It's approximately three point oh seven acres. On the west side, it consists currently of an existing historic farmhouse. And a post and beam barn, and what we're proposing is to subdivide two new building lots off the parcel. There will be stormwater management, erosion control, landscaping, design for the two new homes. And as part of the conditions of approval, the owner has agreed to preserve and develop. The existing farmhouse, which has already been permitted and is under construction at this time.
And a little on the process of how we got here. We did. We have gone to the the zoning hearing board. Previously obtained two variances there, one for the maximum density and one to to apply standard setbacks instead of setbacks from resource protected lands. Both of those were granted last year, and now we're working through the this process. Yeah, so there there's. We, I guess, if you want to talk about the those resolutions.
Yeah, what I what I would like to do, and and Ms. McGowan did receive the the proposed approval letter, I think, so at least you have that before you. And what I would do is at least read part of it in the record so the board is aware. This has been through. Planning Commission and several reviews, so it's it's now ripe for your consideration. As the request is to grant preliminary and final major subdivision approval with the above referenced plan. And it's already been described as what that plan looks like. The subdivision plans were prepared by Dumack Engineering. Consisting of eleven sheets dated June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, last revised June, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. The stormwater management report dated June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, last revised January sixteenth. Twenty twenty-three, also prepared by Dumack Engineering in a response letter dated January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, also prepared by Dumack Engineering. Of course, you will comply with in all respects with each and every requirement of the. Applicable saldo and zoning ordinances and any other regulations and laws at every level of government having jurisdiction over the property. The plan is subject to specific compliance with the following terms. And of course, we already obtained two variances, and you would comply with the the conditions of those variances. Mr. Dumack, yours also mentioned already, the historic house built circa seventeen thirty will be preserved and not demolished. You will use your best efforts to maintain the integrity of the existing barn structure showed on lot number one. Next, a conservation easement, again, as you've mentioned, in the form of a recorded declaration shall be filed of record with the Bucks County Recorder of Deeds. To preserve the remainder of the undisturbed natural resources, which shall be granted in favor of and enforced by the township. And then you shall also comply with all with all requirements as more fully set forth in the second review letter dated February third, twenty twenty-three. As prepared by the Township Engineers Remington and Vernick. You shall comply with any requirements set forth by the Township's Fire Service Director in his review letter dated February second, twenty twenty-three. You shall comply with all requirements set forth in the Township's Traffic Engineers Safe Highway Engineering LLC in the review letter. Dated July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. You shall comply with all comments and requirements set forth by the Township's Traffic Safety Officer, Tom Roach. In his review letter dated January sixth, twenty twenty-three. You shall comply with the requirements set forth by the Township Sewer Engineer Ebert Engineering as set forth in its review letter dated January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. There are waivers that are recommended by the planning commission from the following requirements of the ordinance. First, a separate submission for preliminary land and final land development plans. Also, from section one seventy-eight dash nineteen, which otherwise requires submission of subdivision packet and documents set forth by the ordinance. You shall submit the subdivision packet in electronic format as approved by the township. Next, a waiver from one seventy-three dash twenty point C six to permit one foot contours rather than the otherwise required two foot contours. Next, a waiver from one seventy-eight dash twenty point C capital number nine. So otherwise requires existing buildings and their uses, driveways, sewer lines, storm rains, storm drains, culverts, bridges, utility easements, quarries. Railroads and other significant man-made features within two hundred feet of the site to be shown. Also waiver from sections one seventy-eight dash four fifty point capital A to permit the existing right of way and cartway which to remain than otherwise required. Next, a waiver from section one seventy-eight that forty-seven point eight to not require sidewalks, although you have agreed to pay a fee in lieu of installation. And construction of site otherwise required sidewalks approved by the township and Mr. Juski did send me the amounts tonight in an email. Traffic impact fees would be, and that's in a separate separate fee, but at least that that would be included, six thousand eight hundred eighteen. Parking recreation fee is ten thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars, and the sidewalk fee in lieu. Thirty dollars per linear foot will be fifteen thousand three hundred ninety dollars. I think you received the if you didn't receive the email.
Yeah, we did. We received that.
Next, a waiver from section one seventy-eight dash ninety-three point F three C to permit use of eight inch, twelve inch and fifteen inch pipes. Rather than otherwise required use of eighteen inch pipes. A waiver from section one seventy-eight ninety-three F three H to permit minimum pipe cover of one foot rather than the otherwise required two feet pipe cover. Next, a waiver from section one seventy-four dash twelve point K from the otherwise required minimum twenty-four hour stormwater detention. The final waiver. From section one seventy-eight dash twenty point G from the otherwise required environmental impact assessment. As the otherwise required EIA information has been provided on the other documents as part of the submitted package. If that's appropriate for the board to make a motion to incorporate all those terms, it would be appropriate to have a motion at least generate the conversation. Wait, I I'm sorry. I don't think that waiver was part of that. Was the was a replacement tree waiver as part of this too? I believe it was.
There is a fee that that was.
A fee, yes.
They're planning thirty-one and paying for thirty-eight, right?
Yeah, okay, that's right. Thank you. The. Section one seventy-eight dash eighty-five H four A to not provide sixteen nine replacement trees on site, but rather provide thirty-eight replacement trees on site. Provide a fee in lieu for the remaining thirty-one replacement trees for that the applicable ordinance. So thank you. I'll make sure that's a good. For somebody to be overlooked that I apologize, so. So that those are all the waivers, and that would be the motion then. Your motion?
So moved. Is that good enough?
That'll work. Yeah, I had to repeat everything. I'm not gonna make you go through that whole thing.
Ditto.
Yeah, right. Wait a second.
Second.
I'll second.
I I I'm seconding. I'm yelling second, second.
All right. For that purpose, obviously, if you have any questions you want to ask the the. Motion. Motion made by Supervisor Grunier, seconded by Supervisor Blondie. To. To approve the preliminary final subdivision for twelve seventy-three Lindenhurst. Okay, any comments, questions by the board?
So where's the closest sidewalk to this property?
If you present it, pull up the. The rendering, which was on Zoom a minute ago. You're looking at approximately a thousand foot plus in either direction along Lindenhurst. Actually, I believe the nearest sidewalk. South on Lindenhurst is actually in Newtown Township. And then north, you're looking, and I apologize, I don't know the intersection offhand. Approximately, it's on the other side of the next traffic light up.
Okay.
Three twining, I think.
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. So, okay. Can you tell me a little bit about your stormwater mitigation plan for these this property?
Absolutely.
And. And I prefer preface the marks. You're aware that. That area gets tremendous stormwater surges, particularly at the corner of Lindenhurst, Lindenhurst and Quarry?
There's a rather substantial. Detention, a naturalized detention basin that I'll call the northeast corner of that intersection now. What we're proposing, and I apologize, I have a an L E D system here. We have two ballast pits, one for each proposed building lot. We went through infiltration testing that was inspected by Remington and Vernick. And that data was incorporated into our stormwater control design.
Okay.
So we have complied with the stormwater controls. To be honest, if I remember correctly, the the commentary of the one waiver of the twenty-four hour storm, we had enough infiltration that I don't believe. It could, it went through and infiltrated more quickly than what the ordinance required.
Okay, when you appeared before the zoning hearing board, did any of the neighbors have questions or concerns about stormwater management? Related to the property?
No, sir.
Okay.
It was all resource concerns, trees. And I apologize, the homeowners to the west were more concerned about buffer plantings and that kind of thing.
Okay. And then Andy, this one's for you. You reviewed all the stormwater management stuff. You saw the zoning hearing board. They were happy with what they got there.
Yeah, yeah, we've reviewed the the stormwater management plans. We have a few comments, but I think that. You know, given the 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 plan that was proposed, the 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 size of the stormwater management systems and the fact that they. Allowed themselves to a little bit of a buffer to go beyond what the ordinance requires as far as stormwater management would. Would bring them into compliance easily.
Okay, so and you've gone, okay.
Yes.
Um, one other thing I saw in. And it got handed to me. So there is, and there would be a. There would be an easement in the front for trails or sidewalks in the future?
The discussion, I think, with the planning commission was to actually consider. Installing them on the opposite side, the east side of Lindenhurst. We have some substantial slope issues, and there's substantial retaining walls. Along the in the old original driveway, it actually makes more sense. The east side of Lindenhurst is realistically flat and level. And I believe that was discussed in the planning board. Presentation.
That would match, and there is stuff. There is across the street. There is pathway here, right?
Um, no, there's nothing. There's nothing there currently.
Nothing, okay.
No, the land is more is generally more favorable for placement of a a pathway on that side versus.
Yeah.
And I will state that this is a state road, so. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
John, relate to your, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, yeah.
At that stone wall, since this is a state road, do we know if PennDOT? Has done any recent evaluations as part whenever PennDOT funds a state road improvement? I'm just looking at the the wall. It's an old stone wall. Have they done a section one oh six cultural resources assessment to see? Is that that alone might be a reason to not put a sidewalk here and put it across the street at some point so that we.
Two items. I don't know about the the evaluation, but the stone wall itself probably predates. Realistically, your zoning ordinance, for one thing. Secondly. Uh, secondly, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Majewski, uh, made us aware that there was a realignment of Lindenhurst in this vicinity. Um, I think it was in the early to mid nineties, might have been the eighties, with the idea that PennDOT designed specifically how the, uh, right-of-way and cartway for Lindenhurst in front of this site is. So realistically, they took it into account at that time.
Maybe. I, I.
Theoretically, how's that for a better answer?
There we go, there we go. Sorry, John, I don't.
Yeah, no, and while you're doing that, I was just going through to the maps, I see the, the issue related to where you would put, uh, a bike path in terms of the, the frontage, because I was like, I had to just kind of visualize it. Um, yeah, and also thing is you're up a little higher, so anything that comes water-wise, you've got a little bit of a, a buffer even before it gets to the, the, yeah, okay. Um, I think that's what I have for now. Yeah.
The other comment? Other board?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Actually, as much as I like looking at Supervisor Blondie, would you mind putting the plan back up on the screen?
You think that's me? I'm fancy, but I'm not that fancy.
Yeah. Um, couple of questions, uh, you know, it, getting back to the sidewalk versus the wall, uh, when you, when you look at the street view imagery and all that, um, having driven there many times, obviously, in that, in that intersection. Um, how are we with sightlines coming out of those, coming out of those driveways?
The sightlines, once we, uh, take into account and remove, um, some of the vegetation along the frontage along Lindenhurst, uh, would meet PennDOT standards.
It will?
Yes, sir.
Okay, affirmative, okay. And then relative to the stormwater management design, um, you know, designs now are great, uh, long-term O and M, operation maintenance is always a big deal with stormwater management, so what is our, what is the approach to long-term O and M once it's turned over to the?
To the homeowners?
The homeowners, yeah.
Um, I believe there is an O and, O and M agreement, uh, between, uh, the owners of the property and the township. Township, I believe, has the right at any time to come in to inspect and observe, uh, the system's functioning. If there is a failure, if the, um, the pores in the bottom of the system, uh, clog over time, uh, you guys, the township, sorry, has the right to, uh, request repairs to be made. Uh, the systems themselves, it realistically, the high point on the site is right here. Everything pretty much goes diagonally across the site into Lindenhurst. However, uh, right next to the, uh, property is a rather large detention basin that I believe you guys own. And, uh, part of that, uh, quite honestly, I grew up in Lower Makefield. I've never seen water in that basin, and by my estimation, you're probably about two acres of basin right there.
Thanks.
Uh, it's a substantial system, which has never, in my recollection, had water.
Now, are these, what do you got, two facility, one for each of the new lots?
Yes, sir.
And three?
One is here along the side, and one is a little more towards the front, again, taking into account the general slope of the site.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Um, are those, we talk about long-term O and M and the, and the agreement, are, you also have a deed restriction that you're gonna put in there?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd want, uh, um, relative to trees, that you're not asking for any waivers from our true placement requirements other than paying the fee in lieu?
Correct. If, if we can get more trees on site, I have no problem adding more trees. Um, but I believe we could put in thirty-eight with thirty-one in reserve for, uh, fee in lieu or the reverse, the, the numbers were, okay, thirty-one with thirty-eight in reserve for fee in lieu.
Back to the stormwater question for.
Yes, sir.
Areas, when you calculated your impervious area with, with the swimming pools, I assume they.
Yes, sir.
Did you include the, was it just, did you include the surface area of the, of the actual pool in your impervious area with a curve number of a hundred?
Not, not only did we do that, but we added a little cushion. Normally, we like to put a couple hundred square foot contingency on each system. Just to make sure.
Different conversation I have, but we've talked about this before. It's not effective impervious, it's impervious. Um, and then, all right, so we trying to think of any, from a natural resources perspective, I, I understand that zoning hearing board gave you allowed for variance, not have addition, the resource protection, I'll call it, setbacks, and it's more of a standard lot setbacks, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Um, what are those resources and how close are they to, or are they on the property themselves within those lots, or they, are they off the lots and you're just setting back?
No, no, it, it's, it's a combination. We do have some steep slopes, uh, in here, in this vicinity, I believe there's some um, over in here. Um, my own opinion, oh, I, my apologies, and along the frontage. Um, my opinion is that some of them, the majority of it is realistically man-made. Uh, when Lindenhurst got cut in, uh, it could have been in the eighties or nineties, it could have been substantially before that. Uh, you do have a fairly substantial, uh, steep slope area in the front, more so towards, and I apologize, lot one, uh, and it tapers off more to, uh, congruent grades as you get to, uh, the, the southernmost lot. Um, you also have some woods that are, or trees that would be considered woodlands. Uh, so realistically, it's the woodlands and the steep slopes there that are the, uh, primary impact.
Or wetlands or streams or?
No, sir.
Okay. So getting, since we're talking about the steep slopes and that, that wall, is the, is that wall serving as retaining wall at this point?
Yes.
Is it, have you done a structural investigation to make sure that it's, uh, it's an old wall, so?
It, it is an old wall, it is a dry stacked stone wall. Um, and while I haven't personally done a structural analysis of the wall, uh, someone had an idea of what they were doing back in the day, because, um, the southern wall along that driveway, um, basically is two walls. And they are stepped back from each other. And realistically, uh, that allows for soil interaction, it allows for, uh, capacities to make that wall, um, standalone, even though it's two walls.
Yeah.
Um, I actually think I'm gonna say probably about twelve or fifteen years ago, I recall vaguely that it must have gotten hit. Um, and a dry stacked stone wall does allow for fairly easy remedial repair once the damage occurs. I think it was maybe a month before the repair was done. Um, and it, it's been standing ever since.
Who, who ultimately will own or owns that wall when we're all said and done? Is it the homeowner?
Realistically, it would be the homeowner on lot one.
Okay, so they'd be, if, if something happened to it, uh, unless it's an accident, someone, insurance, all that gets involved, but if it starts to fail, they, they would be.
Just, just like a sidewalk on, in front of someone's home in the right-of-way, they're required to maintain it and replace it if it gets damaged. Yep.
Just, just looking at a street view image of, of the wall, it, it's covered by.
Ivy.
Ivy and, and some other stuff at this time, time of year, but it looks like there's a and do those PVC pipes coming out the bottom, folks, fair, a little bit south of the driveway?
I, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm, I'm not looking at the, the, but.
There, it looks like two.
Okay.
Could be weep holes.
Are those?
It, it, it might be weep holes for the wall itself to, to drain the hydrostatic pressure from behind the wall.
John, to Supervisor Lewis's point about stormwater, we want to make sure we're not putting any too much burden on Lindenhurst itself.
I, I believe that there's, there's an existing system on lot one as well. Um, stormwater management system?
I'll be honest, I don't know the answer to that. But that house does date back to seventeen thirty, so.
Uh, yeah, but for the pool, maybe.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you for answering those.
Any public comment?
Well, good, one, one thing was housekeeping, uh, council, you do, uh, accept all the conditions that were mentioned and they were included in the letter that were discussed tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, quickly, do, do you have renderings of what it looks like, the building itself? Is that, we only have top-down.
Uh, honestly, I do not.
Okay.
Uh, the, uh, owner had hired his own architect. Um, I don't have, I don't think I ever saw anything more than the foundation footprint.
Okay.
Uh, but the designs were submitted and approved by the township.
No problem. And then, uh, I have to ask the questions because we have one supervisor who's not here. And he would typically ask, what's the selling price of the two homes that are being planned for? Do you have any idea on that?
You're, you're asking the wrong guy.
Wrong people, yeah. Yeah, but the technical definition of schmutz, that. I can ask.
It is an engineering term. Thank you.
I'm good.
Before we take the vote, is there anything else we need to do?
No, I think, we, we read that, but the motion was, was the letter with that addition that Mr. Kratzer was kind of to remind me about. Council's accepted the conditions, uh, I think it's been thoroughly reviewed, so we're ready for a vote.
In that case, uh, all those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Aye.
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 I just have a four zero, thank you.
You very much, gentlemen and lady.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item fourteen supervisors reports, I have nothing. Supervisor Bundy?
I've got nothing, thank you.
Supervisor Lewis?
Uh, yes, very quickly, uh, the disability advisory, uh, council met last week. Uh, we talked about a number of things, couple of things for those to remember. If you're in the community and you need help with transportation, Bucks County does have resources for you. I want people to take a look at that. Also, if you, if you need any other assistance, um, to look at the Bucks County SIL, C I L, um, and, and, and check in with their services. That's all I have for that. We talked about the store commission, so that's, that's the extent of my report.
Supervisor McCarthy is absent, and he gave me nothing to report. Uh, Supervisor Granger?
Uh, since traffic commission is reviewing some proposed, uh, project plans, uh, throughout township, EAC met as well, we already mentioned, uh, the, uh, Earth, Earth Day event that they're having, just another reminder, and they are also reviewing, um, various ordinances and proposed, proposed projects that are out there, they'll, they'll provide more comment. Other than that, the other boards have not met.
Mr. Chair, I, I apologize, I missed one element. Uh, Farmland Preservation met, uh, this week. And if you live next to a buffer, a farmland preservation land, it's very important that you don't put anything into the buffer areas or dump. Um, Farmland Preservation is developing a strategy of prompt corrective action to deal with those folks. They have been working with, um, I think it's two hundred and seventy homes that are, but Farmland Preservation, they've written letters and they've reached out to make sure, um, also, you know, uh, to, again, not plant things like bamboo because that's a pain in the tuchus, but there'll be follow-up and they will probably be asking for, for code enforcement where appropriate. Uh, in that case, and I'm sorry, I had forgotten that, uh, Chair, Chair Weiss, I'm all set.
No problem. Um, item fifteen, other business, any business? Item sixteen, appointments, reappointments to board and commissions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Marilyn Hurt to the Emergency Management Committee. And also, uh, Kevin Gallin to the EAC.
Second.
Any comments? Questions? Any public comment? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor of the reappointments signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I just have a four zero. Any other, uh?
Did you want to do?
Did you?
I, I can do this, bud. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make two appointments to the Historical Commission, uh, Ms. Lisa Pellegrino and, uh, Mr. Mitch Palin.
Second.
Wait, a second?
Second.
Second.
Can you really not hear me?
I heard you, I heard you. Motion made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Blondie to appoint the Historical Mission. Lisa Pellegrino and Mitch Palin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I just have a four zero. Other names will be taken care of, uh, in two weeks, hopefully. Item seventeen, public comment?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, before you start my time, uh, Mr. Weiss, I just wanted to just make you aware, I'm recovering from pneumonia. And I could have a coughing spat, so don't worry.
I understand coughing.
So, my, my statement is under three minutes, so if you guys could just afford me the courtesy, uh, and then Ms. Blondie, I hope you feel better, so I'm under the weather just like you. Uh, so, good evening, I think all of you know why, I'm, I'm sorry.
Would you like some water? We have some.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Good evening, I think all of you know why I'm here tonight, uh, but our community may not.
Just for the record, Mr. Daley.
Timothy Daley, Lower Makefield. Um, thanks to the outreach of two whistleblowers who work for LMT, I was alerted to arraigns and malfeasance that has happened under the watch of this board. And what a smorgasbord of misconduct. Wrongful termination of a female police officer settled for three hundred thousand dollars. A ransomware attack resulted in about five hundred thousand dollars cost and a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar ransom payment because somebody didn't apply a patch for vulnerability. And an active-duty, uh, police officer who's been carried on a payroll despite not being able to recertify his firearms training due to a health incident that disabled him in his use of his arm since two thousand and nineteen. I am awaiting an RTK response to determine the amount of salary with the pension and benefits over those three years paid out. To my understanding, yesterday, a grievance was also filed against Chief Kalusi by the PBA regarding another police officer. We would appreciate tonight if you guys would share the details of that grievance. Misappropriation of tax funds are a serious concern. I am sure your solicitor has provided you legal advisement on the concept and legal terminology of surcharge in recent days. For those watching at home, it means that the, if the supervisors knew about these misappropriations of funds in the police department, they are personally liable to pay back the entirety of the fund's loss to the taxpayers. So I hope all of you have been saving for your retirement and are ready to crack your piggy banks open, uh, because I do plan to file a complaint with the Auditor General's Office to put you guys under investigation for this misappropriation of funds. But more concerning was learning that Dan Granger, in cooperation with Chief Kalusi, initiated an illegal surveillance investigation into me on August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one because Dan was concerned about my aggressive verbal tone towards those with differences of opinion at school board meetings and another jurisdiction. I can only conclude that Dan believed it was against the law for me to exercise my one A rights to a person that was a Democrat. So I would like to understand what the legal grounds were that justified this abuse of power that violated my civil rights and that of my family. Twelve days later, six gunshots were fired in proximity to my home. And despite my wife being a witness to the shooting, she has yet to be interviewed by the LMT police. When do these coincidences stop becoming coincidences? I guess that would be when the off-duty police officer pulled me over, initiating a road rage incidents against me uh, right here by the barracks and verbally threatened me until I rolled down my windows and displayed to him two witnesses in the backseat that he didn't know were there. So tonight, I asked LMT to recuse itself from this investigation into the shooting on September second, two thousand and twenty-one at Bennington and Yardley Langhorn and transferred the case to Bucks County DA. Further, given the gravity of the various official misconduct acts that were revealed in the RTKs, I want to ask that the board consider suspending Chief Kalusi with pay and call on the Bucks County District Attorney's Office to investigate into the alleged activities that were revealed in these RTKs within the LMT police station and the LMT business offices. So I hope tonight that my presence didn't scare all of you, especially you, Dan, since your emails sounded like you were really, really scared. So I simply believe in exercising my civil rights to petition my elected officials of my representative government. Thank you.
Well, we will not be answering anything tonight. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Daley. You have a public comment? Hearing none, we'll go to, is there anything online? Okay. Okay. No more public comments, any further business? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.